Let's do that.
Like, no, the cowards are starting the meeting over there. Evening. I have to call this meeting to order. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic.
Hey, can we please start with our roll-calls, please?
Hey, Council President Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Alwerson.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Perez. Roll-call Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President.
I move we excuse the absent council member.
Thank you.
President Prince, second by Councilmember Alwerson. Did the council excuse the absent council member? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos nay. Alright, motion carries, and we're gonna start off tonight with administrative report.
Good evening, everyone. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That is it, sir.
Alright, thank you. Well, we're gonna move on to audience comment. We do have some people signed up to address the council tonight. So I want to remind everybody that all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole. If response is requested, please provide your name, address, including your email address, and we will be sure to follow up. When I call your name, please approach the podium. You'll have three minutes to address the council. There's a timer right in front. When it gets close to the time being up, the little yellow light will shine, and please wrap up your comments. And so we're gonna start off tonight with Judy Schaefer.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm here representing the Rolling Hills community. Group of 300 homeowners, many of whom have come, or some of whom have come with me this evening. And we're just up the hill from City Hall. Over the past many years, we've become increasingly concerned about the unsafe racing and horrible noise that emanates from Puget Drive, which is a major arterial that intersects our neighborhood and provides access to Cascade, Benson Hill, Tiffany Park, and Fairwood. Being a major arterial, we find it unusual that there are no stoplights along the entire stretch from Benson Road, around the bend at 116th, and then on to 168th. This is a distance of two miles. You've been given a map, and the highlighted area shows that two-mile distance. It's become a raceway for cars at all times of the day and night, and motorcycles loud can be heard racing along that roadway at all hours. There have even been two deaths along this road in the last year, one of them occurring behind my home. Car has even gone through our fence. Children in our neighborhood must cross Puget Drive at rush hour to attend the local middle school. This crossing occurs at the western end of Rolling Hills Avenue, where it meets Puget Drive right after a blind corner, with speeding cars being a constant concern. Drivers leaving the neighborhood cannot see speeding cars that might be coming from that blind corner, making it unsafe to exit onto Puget Drive from Rolling Hills Avenue, especially at rush hours. We feel we need a traffic light there. Homeowners who live on the south side of our neighborhood must cross Puget Drive to access our neighborhood amenities, such as the pool, the park, the tennis courts, and the playgrounds. Further, neighbors report that this racing continues beyond Puget Drive to the straight expanse of 116th, where there are no barriers to speeding along that entire stretch all the way to 168th. There's another school and the Family First Community Center in this area. Again, this is a distance of two miles with few crosswalks and no traffic lights. We believe it's far past time for the city to install a multitude of safety measures to prevent further injury or death, which would likely mitigate some of the noise concerns as well. Some of these measures might include stoplights at the western corner of Rolling Hills Avenue and Puget Drive, or at both ends of the avenue where they merge with Puget Drive, just like the one at the entrance to Victoria Hills, which is a distance of only .8 miles. You'll see that on your sketch as well. Speed cameras with photo enforcement might be helpful. Speed bumps, like those recently installed on, like, Washington Boulevard and Kenny Dale, might be helpful. But we're grateful for your thoughtful consideration, for the ideas that you might have come up with yourselves, or that you could ask our city people to find that would benefit our community, and we thank you.
Alright, thank you. So I will address this. Before you leave, what I'll let you know is that we, I did receive an email about this section of road, and I forwarded it to Martin Pastoucha, who's the administrator in charge of Public Works, and our Chief of Police, Chief Schultz. And so we've got traffic calming techniques that we didn't have years ago, and so they will definitely be looking at that and coming back with a recommendation at some point here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next up is Risa Goyt. Risa? Okay. Jolene Flatterly?
Hi, I'm Jolanne Flaherty, and I live in Rolling Hills, or north, excuse me. And everything that Judy just said, I concur with 100%. We like to go outside and have a barbecue, you know, in the summer months. And my husband and I kind of live right up against the road, but there's a bit of a buffer for us. But the loud cars, the mufflers, or they don't have mufflers, and then the loud engines, and then the music, and there's a racing that goes on there, and it's so loud, you can't, you can't even hear yourself. You know, I, I've been at another neighbor's home, and she lives much closer to Puget Drive, and they had put in a fence, hoping to put some, and they put in something to kind of buffer the sound, and it does nothing. You'd have to have something really, really high. But anyway, I just wanted to, to come and support our neighborhood. I do worry about the children. There are deer. A lot of times you'll see a family of deer walking down Rolling Hills. And, you know, it frightens me to think that a car could hit a deer or hit a child. And even if they put a stoplight in where Judy was talking about, where we have a crosswalk and we have the orange flags, even if I'm, I'm certain someone would run that, that light, I just really hope the city can put together some plan and, and get these people to slow down. A lot of times I'll say to my husband, you know, we'll be outside enjoying a nice dinner, and I'll hear a car race by, and I'll think, I just wish the police would just chase that guy, but I never hear it. But anyway, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next up is Diane Dobson.
Can you swap number four to number 12?
Sure. Next up is Lydia Mascherina.
Good evening, Council. My name's Lydia. My husband and, my husband Dennis and I own the Berliner Pub. It is a German-style gastropub in downtown Renton. We've been a neighborhood favorite for the past 13 years. I'd like to comment on the effects that Initiative 23-02 will have on our business. Since the end of the pandemic, things in the restaurant business have been different. People's behavior has changed, business is down, and costs are up. We pay our front-of-house staff, the servers and hosts, minimum wage, but they do not make minimum wage. With their tips, they make between $20 and $40 extra per hour, depending on the day and how busy it is. They're earning around $50 an hour. Why are the tips not counted as wages? I don't understand. They're taxed, they're received, they're spent as wages. I don't understand why they don't go to their wage. The back-of-house, the kitchen staff, is paid higher than minimum wage, and they make a small amount in tips also. If the front-of-house, then, is forced to get a pay increase, plus their $30 an hour in tips, I have to be fair and give the back-of-house a pay increase as well. We average around 753 hours a week in labor hours. With a $2 per hour increase, plus the taxes on top of that, we have to make an extra $1,600 per week just to cover wages. I'm not making a profit of $1,600 a week, I can tell you that. So where's it coming from? Higher prices. We already get comments about high prices at our restaurants. All if, most if not all of our menu items have to go up by at least a dollar. Prices, for example, in Kent are going to stay the same. So why do customers not just drive 10 minutes down the road to save $30 on their tab when you add taxes and tip in? It's very easy for them. It would be okay if the increase was statewide, but why target Renton? We are so central, people can drive very close and very nearby to avoid the price hikes that we're gonna have to do. The ordinance sounds great for big business. I understand that. Big companies like Walmart, who are making millions in profit on the backs of their employees. I agree, they need to treat their employees better. But for small businesses like me, my employees are my family. Some have been with us for about 13 years. Oh, sorry. Our labor costs are already at 40% of our total income. If this initiative is implemented overnight, I have to make cuts. I have to decide who stays and who goes. Last week was slow, and I made a loss of $2,800 in one week. Sorry. I struggle each week to make payroll, to pay my bills. For the first time in 13 years, my husband and I have seriously thought about selling. I don't want to. I really like our business. I just don't see how we're gonna make it. Thank you for listening.
Okay, next is Derek Anderson.
Hello, Renton City Council. Mayor, I appreciate you guys hearing us again tonight. It is, it has been a very enlightening experience talking with you all over the past few weeks, and I have learned a lot, and it is not only a, an honor to speak, to bring to light some of the issues that have been going on with the management crisis in Renton Airport, but it is, it's also helped me improve my speaking capabilities over, in general, in some of the presentation that I have, regardless of the, the stresses that we are all facing. And, you know, moving forward, it is, it has been, in the Landing Gear Works' goal and aspirations to make things better for our community. We didn't originate here in Renton. We, we chose to be here. We, we've, we've come from a really long history of, of community and aviation involvement, and, and we really would like to help promote that amongst the city and work with, with them as well. You know, this, this didn't start with, with just what we do here. Tom Anderson actually started this all a long time ago with the idea to make things better. And, and that, that grew into a dream to really improve upon the community and aviation and, and make things safer and more reliable for everybody. And, you know, that's, that's our history, and we really, uh, we really do think that our history is important to look into, and the city's history as well. And that brings me kind of to the next point, is that the, the history of Renton Airport is very valuable, and, you know, we do really appreciate the, being able to be a part of that and, and keep it intact. The, the airport has gone through a lot in the past decade, and we were brought here under more stable times. And it is something I really urge the city to look into, is the decisions that have been made at the airport, and the reasons they have been made, and who is really involved in all of that. I am thankful for you hearing us out tonight. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next up is Tom Anderson.
Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight at your event here. First off, I want to tell you, there's some great energy out at the airport. The weather's getting better, and business is good. Customers coming in from Southern California and Alaska, getting ready for their season. One of the reasons I run a business is because I'm a competitive person. I've had a lot of challenges in my life, the challenges of this, of the management at the airport, not listening to us and such is, is, isn't anything in comparison to some of the things that have happened to me in my life. One of the things that happened in my life happened last Saturday. I want to tell you about it because last week, a week ago, you guys had the life jackets on, and I went to a sportsman's warehouse, and I bought a life jacket. Then on Saturday, the wake of a big boat knocked me out of my boat, and I had to swim in freezing cold 45-degree water, and I turned out okay. So maybe, just maybe, all this that happened, happened for a reason, just because of that. I've had a lot of incidents with aircraft and skydiving. I've got 2,133 skydives, and I've had 13 malfunctions. So I've gone through a lot. So this issue with the airport, we'll get through it. And thank you for the, the events that have come forward lately with allowing me to pay on some past due, splitting up my bills. The bills were all lumped together for us out at the airport, and I want you folks to know, the council, that I got three notices, two notices put on my hangers out at the airport to pay within three days. This was the first chance I had to pay those bills and get it split up, and it was. But the issue I want to talk to you guys about is you need to have some oversight, please, with whoever issued those, because I got a notice after I paid those that the billing was wrong. Those notices were put on the hangar, and the billing was wrong. And also, I've been trying to pay these bills since last November. They were all lumped together. And they want to charge me late fees. So please, look at this again and make some wide decisions. I'm gonna be having a meeting with the attorneys on the 23rd. It hasn't been confirmed yet, but that's the date. So I'm sure we'll be talking again, and again, thank you for the inspiration. We have a great city. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, the next is Troy Jagger. It says, it says Troy or Cindy. Whichever you can talk.
Okay, well, thank you for your time here. Good to see you, Ed. Yeah, I've been in the city of Renton, live on the west side there in Rolling Hills for many years, and down here with Judy, great job. And just asking that, you know, we look at maybe what kind of engineering could be done to that, you know, maybe some channeling of the street, Puget Drive becomes quite a speeding area. I don't know if even just reducing the speed limit might be a reasonable or a cheaper way to maybe lower the, the traffic speeds. Possibly, you know, a little more enforcement could get, get the attention of people. But yeah, I do appreciate your time here, listening to us, because we do like the neighborhood and try to do everything we can, but yet it does get on our nerves at a point with all the speeding vehicles, so. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Cindy, did you want to speak also? You're signed up.
Thank you for, for listening to us with all of our repeat things, but what I wanted to let you know as a, I work from home, so I don't drive every day. And in the times that I have driven, I've multiple times had people pass me going the speed limit in the carpool lane. I have had oncoming at your guys' roundabout that you put in. I'm going from Puget on to 116th, and I'll have people from 116th came head-on to me because they did not want to go around the roundabout. As well as I've had multiple people pass me on 116th when I'm going to speed limit, and there's a school on there with no sidewalks. So that 116th is, has become a real issue. And one of the cars that passed me turned down the gravel road between the church and, I think there are two churches. So I don't know if they have friends, if that's where they live, but they just went flying, I mean, I'm going to speed limit, and they went flying around me, and I'm like, what is going on? And then they, on their break, so they could turn right, right in front of me to, it, it was crazy. So just as personal experiences, not a daily driver on those roads, it has really gotten bad. So I just wanted my experience to be shared. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Sue Kenyon.
My name is Sue Kenyon. I also live in Rolling Hills. I am not directly on Puget Drive. I am probably a good eighth of a mile off into the neighborhood. But frequently, I mean, it's a daily occurrence. We constantly are hearing the racing. We definitely see the speeding going on. It is affecting the neighborhood children in how we let them walk to school as far as crossing Puget Drive. It's a concern of just the walkers in our neighborhood when they cross from one side of the neighborhood to the other, because there are some blind curves, and I think that that's the primary concern for individuals who are out physically on their feet. But the other concern is, as Judy mentioned, we have had several accidents already in the last year. I've lived in this neighborhood 10 years, and I would say in the last two years, the speeding has doubled. And so I don't know what's going on out there, especially with the police department being so close. It's one of the things where I know I sit in my home going, can they not hear it? I mean, like, we all hear it. Can you not hear, like, just get in your car and come on up there, because it wouldn't take much to catch anyone. So we definitely appreciate your attention to this matter. We find it to be a serious concern, and so we hope that you take it seriously as well. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, the next name, I can't read the last name, but the first name, I believe, is Martha? Okay, that's, Martha, we are fine with that. Okay, Kathleen, Kathleen Donahue?
Good evening. Thank you for receiving me. I live on the south side of Rolling Hills. And something that's not been mentioned tonight, that was mentioned at our annual meeting, was the fact that people are turning into Rolling Hills at 19th Avenue, I guess, or Street. Is it Street or Avenue? I don't know. 19th. And they have to zigzag to get all the way through the neighborhood to get back up to 116th. And some cars have been hit that have been parked on the side of the roads in front of their own homes. So that's one thing that I, I didn't hear tonight. Another thing, just a real easy fix, could you at least paint a double line on Puget Drive? Because you're allowing people the right to, to pass, as long as they're doing 35 miles an hour, but they're not. But there's, it's a single line, and that's disturbing to me. Appreciate all that you've heard tonight, and I appreciate and look forward to hearing what we can do with this. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Yeah, so that was our last speaker about speeding. We, we will look into this. This is something that we're hearing in a number of neighborhoods throughout the city. There's quite a bit of speeding going on, so we will be in touch. Okay, next up is Diane Dobson.
I'm gonna pause. I'm Diane Dobson, represent the voices of local businesses, owners in our Renton community, and my role as the CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to urge you as a council to review and reconsider Initiative 2302, which as currently written poses significant challenges for our local businesses. Firstly, it's important to highlight that Initiative 2302 was crafted by individuals outside the Renton community, designed for a context that does not align with our city's unique needs and characteristics. This lack of local insight is evident, and it has resulted in an initiative that does not adequately serve our businesses. Throughout the process of drafting this initiative, there was zero participation or involvement from Renton area businesses. In fact, representation was made throughout the signature gathering process that Renton area businesses had been consulted in the process. Yet a direct line of questioning to those leading the initiative in Renton discovered consultation was made with unions that have employees in Renton. This exclusion of the business community has been a major point of contention. Feedback from our business community, both before and after the initiative passed, has been overwhelmingly negative. Business owners feel blindsided by the lack of consultation and consideration of their needs. Moreover, the process lacked transparency. There was no notification to all licensed Renton businesses prior to the election of the potential change of doing business in the city. Title V of the Renton Municipal Code Governing Finance and Business Regulations has Chapter 5 dedicated to the requirements of a business owner, including over 5,200 words outlining the requirements of a business owner, both large and small, as it relates to operations of business within the city of Renton. This chapter now has reference made to Initiative 2302 for businesses who are looking to purchase their new business license with the city. But the over 5,000 businesses currently licensed to do business within the city receive no notice of the potential for anticipated change, which resulted in some instances a 25% increase of payroll cost. This overnight rollout compared to the tenure phase in Seattle that had comprehensive input for all relevant stakeholders, the lack of consideration for tips and benefits, as the city of Seattle also had, the initiative citing a small business as 15 employees or less contradictory to the state of Washington that defines a small business as under 50. These challenges and nuances will be devastating to our small business community. This omission has led to widespread confusion and a sense of deception among business owners. Many feel that the city of Renton, where their businesses are licensed and contribute to the local economy, failed to properly notify them about the significant change in business law. Small business owners in particular are deeply engrossed in their day-to-day operations. From sunup to sundown, they are focused on running their businesses and often do not have time to check social media or follow local news closely. They do, however, pay attention to reports and information delivered directly from the city relating to their operations. The absence of direct communication regarding this initiative has led to a feeling of letdown among these entrepreneurs. Consider the impact on local businesses, like you heard tonight, like the Berliner or Smokey Monkey Pizza, who, recognizing their demands to make cuts or come out of retirement, were not feasible at the stage in their life, and they opted instead to sell the business after 10 years in Renton. These businesses are the backbone of our community, and their voices deserve to be heard and considered in any decision that affected them, and that critical factor was overlooked in this process. I urge the city council to revisit Initiative 2302 and consider revising it to better reflect the needs and realities of the Renton community. Our businesses deserve an initiative that makes sense for them, crafted with their input and tailored to our local context. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Alright, next up is the consent agenda. There are eight items for consideration. Are there any that council would like to pull for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
Seeing none, I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
It's been moved by Council President Prince, second by Okay. It's been moved by Council President Prince, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the council approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right. Motion carries. We're on to unfinished business. Council President Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee has one report to present.
The Transportation Aviation Committee Committee report appointments to the Renton Airport Advisory Committee. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to confirm Mayor Pavoni's appointments to the Renton Airport Advisory Committee. First is Ms. Colleen Deal for the Kennydale Neighborhood Alternate Position, uh, term expiring May 7th, 2026. And, uh, Ms. Elizabeth Callahan, West Hill Neighborhood Primary Position, term expiring, uh, May 7th, 2027. And Mr. John Smutney from the Washington Pilots Association Primary Position, and with that term expiring May 7th, 2027. And this is signed by the, uh, committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Van. The council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right. Motion carries. Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Member Albertson.
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Um, Councilmember Van.
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And then Councilmember Halloran, I'm sorry, I skipped you.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Um, next up is legislation. We have one ordinance for second and final reading.
This ordinance is regarding Docket Item 228, which is Density Bonus Review, AKA the INLU fee program. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 48120C, 148120D4, 48120D12, amending section 4965, and amending section 41110 of the Renton Municipal Code, amending density bonus regulations, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted. I, I'm, oh, wow, this is second read. I move ordinance be adopted, is read.
Okay.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This is second reading. If there's no discussion, requires roll call.
Council President Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Uh, roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
You. Motion carries. We're on to new business. Council President Prince.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, on Monday, May 27th, there will be no meetings to, in celebration of the Memorial Day holiday, but I'm sure we hope everyone comes down to Veterans Park for our Memorial Day celebration. Then on Monday, June 3rd, um, at 5:45 PM, uh, the panel will be meeting in council chambers and by video conference. We have one item on the agenda, civic core, downtown civic core vision and action plan update. Uh, then at 7:00 PM, we will have our council meeting here in chambers. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember McGurven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to announce the Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, June 3rd at 5:15 PM in the council conference room and via video conference. Uh, we have just one item on the agenda, and that is, uh, one more appointment to the Renton Airport Advisory Committee. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran.
I have no new business. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Member Rivera.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Albertson.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. On, uh, Monday, June 3rd, the Planning and Development Committee will meet at 3:30 PM in the council conference room and via video conference. Three items on the agenda, planned action ordinance briefing, uh, comprehensive plan draft elements update, and emerging issues in CED. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Van.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Utilities Committee's meeting on June 3rd, 2024, um, is canceled. And, uh, and, and I also want to take this opportunity, uh, to, as we are in the month of May, um, want to acknowledge and recognize many contributions of our Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander, uh, American community members. Um, and, uh, per the 2020 Census Government site, uh, there are 26% of those residing in Renton are from AANHPI ancestry. And I want to thank them for making Renton their home, uh, establishing businesses here, and thanking them for the resilience, not just only to survive, but to thrive and build a better community here for all. Given that we came out of a global pandemic with lots of serotypes, anti-Asian hate, and, uh, hate crimes, it's important to recognize and remind that the contribution of our AANHPI community is tremendous to the betterment of our city. Um, I also want to thank the numerous volunteers and commissioners who are serving our city, and really just bringing your authentic self and making sure that this is a, uh, city that's welcoming to all. Um, as we all know, and thank you to council and Mr. Mayor for our historic, um, appointment, but also promotion of our chief of staff from the council, Judith Subia, being the first, um, chief of staff, but also of AANHPI ancestry. This goes, means a lot as someone from that community, uh, myself. Um, and there are quite a bit of contributions and hours of labor, talent, and treasures that we have, um, contributed to the community broadly. Um, but notably, I wanted to also acknowledge Equity Commissioner Manami Emako, uh, Ema, Emakwa, sorry, and of course, Inclusion Task Force member Vasuda, Dr. Vasuda Sharma, for those of others, volunteers and their countless hours, because, um, it's really the authentic engagement and not just celebrating our communities, but really meeting community where they're at and, and going through the complexity and challenges and growth together. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you for that. What is the wish of the council?
Move adjourned.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Albertson. We adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. We're adjourned.